All right, and I have six o'clock. Good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. No remote electronic attendance, correct?
No.
But we do have several proclamations and guests with us tonight for those. The first is for Earth Month, and Lori McCollum of Progressive Action for the Common Good is here with us. I'll read it first, and then you can say a few words if you'd like. The proclamation states, whereas Earth Day was first celebrated on April 22nd, 1970, with the goal of inspiring and appreciation of our nation's natural resources through conservation and protection, and whereas the celebration of this day marks an annual review of and commitment to the principles of that first Earth Day, and whereas Earth Day marks a renewed commitment to environmental stewardship and to implementation of sustainability efforts, and whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as environmental degradation, global health issues, climate change, food, and water shortages, and whereas it is understood that the citizens of the global community must step forward and take action to create positive environmental change to combat the aforementioned global challenges, and whereas the city of Moline celebrates Earth Day by extending it to the month of April in recognition of the commitment to environmental stewardship, and whereas the city of Moline residents are encouraged to implement practices designed to preserve and protect our environment and shape the future of our environmental security. Now, therefore, I, Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 Earth Month. Lori?
Good evening. Thank you very much for accepting, doing that proclamation. Progressive Action for the Common Good appreciates all the things that Moline is involved in with regard to sustainability, from working with MetroLink to your work with the Rock Island County Waste Management Agency, when I know you guys were one of the few votes to maintain those drop-off centers, and various things you're doing, like your water initiative. And so, we really appreciate that. We're going to be hosting an Earth Day Fair on May 7th, and we're going to be showing all of the proclamations from the cities there for everyone to see, and you're all welcome to attend from 9:00 to 2:00. There'll be about 30 different tables, local environmental and conservation groups there. Thank you again.
Thank you. Our second proclamation is a request from the National Safety Council to declare the week of April 11 through 15, 2022, as Work Zone Safety Week. And our guest today is Tim Foster with Laborers Local 309. Proclamation states, whereas Work Zone Awareness Week, April 11 through 15, encourages the traveling public to slow down, obey rules, and drive safely through highway work zones; and whereas the National Safety Council works to bring awareness to the issue of distracted driving by highlighting the month of April as Distracted Driving Awareness Month; and whereas workers diligently continue to improve, rebuild, and maintain roadways so that motorists can safely and efficiently travel; and whereas accidents can be prevented by setting aside distractions, using extra caution, reducing speed, and giving a work zone undivided attention when monitoring; and whereas distracted driving, cell phone usage, and other inappropriate behaviors have put fellow motorists, passengers, workers, and public safety personnel at risk. Now, therefore, I, Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim the week of April 11 through 15, 2022, as Work Zone Safety Week. Thank you, Mr. Foster. You have a few words?
Yeah, just a few. Thank you, everyone, for passing this proclamation. It means a lot to the safety of the workers. Thank you.
And finally, we have Greg Wilson with us from the Rock Island Arsenal to declare the month of April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. And they have a little bit different tradition here. So, if the chiefs will come to the board with me, do you have your marker?
I do have two of these, so however you want to do it, and make sure I'm recording. And I am, and any time.
Thank you so much for sharing this with us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item, Board Appointments. This is my mayor's reappointment of Darren Gault to the Rock Island County Emergency Telephone Service Board for a full two-year term to expire April 1, 2024. Any questions? Thank you. Is there any public comment this evening? Hearing none. Are there questions on the agenda? Hearing none, we move to our COW agenda items. Oh, we do have, oh, yes. We, uh, thank you. Back to number six, questions on the agenda. We have pulled, um, item 17.4, correct?
Yes.
From the regular council non-consent agenda. We'll keep that item under the COW, but pull it from the regular meeting.
And then Chapter 4 and 5 informational is postponed as well.
Yes, Chapter 4 and 5 informational, Part 2 is postponed. Our attorney is ill this evening, and we really need her to be part of that discussion. Okay? Uh, right. 7.1, A Resolution Authorizing the Seating of 2022 Home Rule Volume Cap. Mr. Vitas.
Yes, Mayor, and members of council, before you tonight is a request by the Quad Cities Regional Economic Authority to allow them to have our allocation, annual allocation, from the, from the state under the Home Rule Volume Cap, to move that to QCREDA in the amount of $4,517,150, which is population-driven. This is an annual allocation. And what would happen is this amount would be transferred to them rather than to return to the State of Illinois' general fund and for other purposes there. It would keep the money locally. To give you some idea, in the past, there have been projects where, where the Quad Cities Regional Economic Development Authority did work here in Moline, going as far back as the record shows here, as the Heritage Place in Moline back in 1991 for an $11 million project. Whitey's Ice Cream, the plastic products company, both '95, '97, respectively, different amounts. So there's a long history of, of working with the Quad Cities Regional Economic Development Authority, and I've requested this, these funds at their request be transferred to them rather than to be returned to the State of Illinois.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Alderman Waldron, second by Alderman Tymian. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 7.2, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 1232-2021 Fiscal Year 2022 Budget for the Moline Police Department by temporarily increasing the authorized strength of sworn personnel from '81 to '86, and permanently increasing authorized strength for sworn personnel from '81 to '84. Mr. Vitas.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Chief Gault, also here this evening, is requesting to increase this number from the '81 to the '86 figure in terms of authorized full-time sworn personnel. He's provided information that clearly indicates that historically that our staffing levels have not really exceeded, on average, a 76 full-time officers in terms of the past, I believe, 10, at least 10 years, as far back as his scattergram goes. We, as, as a part of that process, and I would concur with the chief's request, in the, in the amount of $221,451.35, that that would be a, the general fund, we would use general fund reserves, that an amendment would be brought forward at a later date to this effect, allowing him then to increase this number so that he can go ahead and recruit the officers that we, that we have going through the academy. At the same time, those that have been interviewed who do not need to go to the academy because they're already accredited law enforcement officers, and so that we can get our number up to the '81, because it's basically, it's a, it's a rolling number. And we don't expect that we'd ever get to the '86, but we need the ability to have enough, I guess, room or margin in order to, to attract and to retain the officers we have, as well as to induce those to come to work for the city of Moline. The chief, you want to add anything else? I'm more than happy to have you come up.
Yeah, I think you've adequately indicated the problem with the police department. We've had a massive departure of staff, and as you can see in the documents I provide, we're at 69 officers right now, working bodies, we have eight in training. It's, over the last five years in a scattergram, it's been a constant roller coaster. And we're, it takes about a year to get someone up and running. We are in a unique position right now. We do have two candidates that are certified law enforcement officers that we could bring onboard and into training, that would retain our three academy slots in May. And the reason I'm bringing this forward to you now, and those of you that have been here before, heard me speak, is that it's all timing with the academies. We only have an academy available in May and September. So we have to turn those names in next week to get them into the academy. So, we'll, we are still planning, we know that there's two people leaving on disability claims, retirement at the end of the year, and so we're going to continue to be in that up and down. And I indicated in that memo, for years, we have had positions that are vacant, including Alderman Williams' former Crime Stoppers assignment. We haven't had anybody in that position for 18 months because of injury. So I'm just looking to try to get us back to full staff. And then, I indicated in, in the materials provided to you, our call volume is at the highest it's ever been. And so, we're, we're struggling to provide those services to the residents.
Motion approved, second.
Discussion, Chief, I have a question. Do you have any background, and it's okay if you want to follow up with a memo, but any reasons why the call volume is the highest it's ever been? Because our population has not increased.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's several reasons. One, if you look, there's, there's an obvious spike in 2015 where people became more mobile with cellular phones. That was when pretty much everyone had a smartphone. The city of Moline is obviously unique to some of the other cities, is that almost everybody passes through Moline. The new bridge, the beautiful new John Deere Road, the volume of calls and that we receive from the public has just astronomically increased since 2015. The police department actually had 83 officers at one time, eroded over departures through loss of like COP positions in both the east and the west ends. And we've just continued to have more and more calls. So, I think part of it is the volume that, that the city sees in retail, travel, transient population through the city, I think is probably largely driving that.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. Ah, first and second, it was Mr. Moyer and Mr. Williams. Thank you. Thank you for. 7.3, A Resolution Authorizing the Renewal of the City of Moline and Rock Island Arsenal Refuse and Recycle Collection Intergovernmental Support Agreement.
Madam Mayor, members of council, before you, is a resolution that would authorize the renewal of the city of Moline's agreement with the Rock Island Arsenal for refuse and recycling collection, which is an intergovernmental support agreement that we've had with the arsenal going back by four years ago. This would be the fifth and final year of that agreement, and then in the subsequent years, we'd have to revisit and renegotiate. We're recommending approval of the final year of the agreement in the amount of $20,513, which would be paid in quarterly installments, as was outlined in the original agreement. The original agreement calls for a 2% annual increase in it for the CPI, future agreements. We would revisit that formula. So we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Alderman Waldron, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 7.4, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute and Attest to a Second Amendment to the Heritage Place Parking Structure Lease Agreement between the City of Moline and Heritage Place Associates LLC.
Madam Mayor, members of council, one, it gives me pleasure to bring this forward because it's something that has been in discussion for the better part of at least eight months that I'm aware of. It might even predate that timeframe. This is with regards to the lease, long-term lease of the sixth floor of the Heritage Place property in downtown Moline, which, as you know, was constructed back in the early 90s, approximately 1990, 1991, along with the adjoining parking structure that the city caused to be built. It was part of an economic development program or agreement at the time with the parking garage serving as the inducement to cause the developer to actually construct the seven-story Heritage Place building. At that time, we leased this property, or we leased this property through an agreement with the then-owner and then with the current owner, SAMCO Properties, SAMCO Properties, I believe, LLC. That lease continued. There was the original agreement, which was a 20-year lease with a 19-year renewal provision in it. What triggered that entire lease timeframe was actually the issuance of the first Certificate of Occupancy. We went back and painstakingly, Joe Kuhlberg prowled through files to find when that might have been. We've determined as best we can that that would have been 1992 when the first CO was actually issued. That being said, the, the present owners have been working on lease negotiations with the US government to lease the entire sixth floor of the property. They were successful, actually, in, in those negotiations and producing a lease. I've had the opportunity to at least review a part of that lease agreement and can attest to you that it is valid and that it is for the period of time that I'm sure Mr. Stranland, who's in the audience representing SAMCO, can identify. He's also a tenant in that building, so, you know, he would have somebody on the floor below him. What they're looking for is an extension of that lease to 2051. The original lease was 20 years. The renewal was automatic, and unless either party objected for an additional 19 years, there's about nine years actually left on the lease. The US government, in order to lease that space, similar to negotiations like we had with the post office, which took over a year, wants to be assured that they will have adequate parking spaces as a part of that lease that coincide with the lease agreement for the tenant's space inside the Heritage Place. So there's a, there's a marriage between parking, which we control, and of course, the, the building itself that SAMCO controls at the present time. So we're looking to approve this agreement, but there's a number of issues that have come up that were raised in the last day or so that we want to go back and look at. So that's why we removed it as, as a matter of a vote tonight, so that we can at least explore those issues a little bit with Mr. Stranland, who is here. Should you have any questions of him and his company, he represents SAMCO, SAMCO LLC. So, that's kind of a brief history on what's going on. It's exciting. I have to tell you, it's exciting to be able to find anybody to lease office space today. This space has basically been empty, I believe, as I've been told, since at least 2019, when John Deere relocated their operations to their own building. So, these floors have remained empty prior to the pandemic and through the pandemic. So, we're looking forward to having additional employees working into downtown and then lunching in downtown, having breakfast downtown, and maybe even having dinner after work some evenings. So, you know, we do support what's going on with the property, with the project, and hope to bring it up for a final vote at a subsequent meeting. And with that, there's questions of myself, I'm here to answer them, and questions of Mr. Stranland, he's also here, fresh off the plane, so.
Can I get a motion first, before discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Waldron?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Tymian. Discussion? Sir Tymian.
Yes, Your Honor, I, I appreciate removing this from the council agenda tonight. And I just, I'm sure that this sentiment is shared. I don't want to lose flexibility for a city-owned parking space, mostly with how much development we're talking about downtown. And so, I, I know that the idea's been floated of just leasing a certain number of spaces to the lessee versus the whole structure, you know, and I, I just, I'm thinking as we talk about residential downtown, having the option to multi-use that, that facility for parking and possible residential, 2051 is a long time away. And so, I, I don't want our hands to be completely tied. And so, that's just what I'm kind of hoping comes out of the continued discussions. Obviously, moving forward, and we don't want to dissuade a possible occupant, that's the last thing that I think we should aim for, but I really think the flexibility would be great and just looking at options like that. So, that's, wanted to speak my piece about that part of it.
Anyone else? Mr. Moyer?
Thank you. So, we, if I understand right, we own the, we own the parking garage. We pay for all the maintenance in the parking garage. And we receive $1 a year for the right to use it solely for SAMCO properties. Is that correct?
Yeah, if you could, Roger, I think it'd be great, because some of those relate to section, Article 8.1, 8.2, which is, you know, capital improvements to the property versus routine maintenance, and they're uniquely different.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. It was a chore to get here, so. I was, came to compliment your attorney, I, I'm Roger Stranland, by the way, and, and came to compliment your attorney for all the recitals that are in the resolution. And, and your city administrator has, I think, covered it all accurately. The question then is, help me.
Maintenance.
Maintenance. I, I think that, I think that's accurate. It was an incentive originally in the 90s to do what the building, to create the use that the building is now used for. And I know that it's, you can help me with the count, but there are three parking ramps in downtown. All of them are used by multiple tenants. And so, presently, the agreement allows for use at other hours by the public. So it's not exclusively a private entity. I think the, the contractor that does the maintenance also does the maintenance for the ramp.
Service area.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure about the MetroLink Center Station ramp, but that might be public, I'm not sure. But the concept is one that is a public-private partnership. You wouldn't have one without the other, especially at, at that time. You will recall that that was the first public-private partnership in a whole new era. And there've been three waves of reinvestment in that building without one public dollar, at least by this present landlord. And millions of dollars have been put into that building and in a, a number of waves. One wave came from the present landlord when Deere and Company occupied. If you've been in that building, you know what I'm talking about. And now, the next wave started when my firm relocated. We were forced to relocate, and so, we chose to relocate in Moline. Frankly, we wouldn't have, well, let me put it this way. We would have had to look at alternatives if we didn't have the parking amenity that we have. And so, your, your competition, I don't have to tell you who your competition is. And it, and it's less so with government entities, but it's still very aggressive. With non-governmental entities, it's not just this side of the river. And so, we have, had been in this area since 1870, and we were enthused by the landlord's enthusiasm to reinvest in that building. So, when we ventured into this in 2020, it was in the throes of COVID. But that landlord structured a deal that parking was an important point of, of it, but there was also a lot of private investment, and a Moline contractor was hired. And I would, will tell you that a Moline contractor is probably in the running for this newest wave of investment, which will be, again, substantial. And so, I'm happy to answer questions now or offline. I will grant you an invitation at any time to come over and tour that building. And I think you'll be impressed, but you can also be impressed by the dark spaces. And, 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 but there are so many valued, I think, I, I can't be objective because I'm including my own firm, of course, but there's so many valued tenants in that building. Three law firms, an architecture firm, an engineering firm, University of Illinois nursing, appellate court office, FBI, and one prospective government tenant. And, and I appreciate Mr. Vitas' work on this because I wanted to have credibility when this was presented. And, yes, we, there is a signed lease. It's about this thick. I didn't negotiate it. But if you've negotiated government leases, you know there are a number of contingencies. And I'm concerned about the, the parking issue. The landlord is, is concerned. And we don't want the prospective tenant to be concerned now that we've, the way he, the way the landlord describes it is, it was a race to the starting line. He's at the starting line now. There's a good amount of due diligence that is yet to occur, and the parking obligation that he is able to deliver to prospective tenant is one of those big-time contingencies. And so, I've structured a lot of these, well, I've structured parking ramp deals where there've been three or more parties that have had an interest in them. Right now, I'm aware on this ramp of it being a post-5:00 PM. That's the entirety of the ramp, post-5:00 PM. During the business day, especially when Deere was there, which is the same square footage, they were very possessive about every space they had. And there was not one space that was unspoken for. So, when our firm came, the landlord was understandably very miserly about the number of spaces that, that we were accorded. Well, now I know why. I mean, I've been telling my own operation that, you know, we all rise with the tide, and that includes the entire downtown. And, and with new tenants, you bump into more people in the elevator, but you notice that there's things that are being improved. And I, I hope you've already noticed that that building has been improved. And, and so, so I'm, I'm at the pleasure of your counsel as to any questions that I can answer. I know you have the authority to go into closed session for something of this nature. I also, like I say, I'll repeat my invitation to, to identify things offline, but because of the, of the vulnerability of, of this opportunity, the, the landlord had requested some level of confidentiality, and that's, that's what we've been navigating.
Mr. Waldron.
Mr. Stranland, if, I, I got out of your, your just little talk there, is this not a done deal?
It's a signed, it's a signed lease.
Okay.
And I have it with me, and.
Because my concern is I don't want to, in a week or two, approve this out for 2052, and then this, this potential lessee vanishes.
Granted, granted. It's a chicken and egg situation, but this is, this is the lease. I didn't negotiate it, but it, it is a GSIA-issued lease. But there are a number of contingencies. And, and so, moving away from this project, the other governmental leases that I've negotiated, a couple in particular relating to the airport, is, and good advice is to get their foot in the door under almost any terms, especially in this market. And good things will happen. Longer-term commitments will occur. The governmental tenants that I mentioned, the FBI, the appellate court, they've been there as long as I can remember. Now, granted, the, the appellate court is Judge Litten, and that could move if, if he no longer is on the bench. But there are, I don't know if this helps things. There are three lockers in that, in that building. But in other desirable uses, and, and so hopefully, and then. But, uh, in other desirable uses, uh, uh, and, and so hopefully, uh, and this, uh, occupancy that's on the front burner is the, uh, entire, uh, sixth floor, as Mr. Vitas mentioned.
So, so if I understand you correctly, you're saying this is a great opportunity, it's almost a done deal. Uh, we need to be cautious about too, too protracted of a discussion. Like it needs to be focused and finished in order for this deal to completely go through?
Yes, it's, it's a signed lease, and I, you know, litigated leases that are at this state, uh, uh, status, but ste- stepping on the other side of the table, there are many ways to get out of this lease. Uh, and, you know, and, and that's, that's by design. Uh, and, uh, but it is a signed lease, which is a huge accomplishment. Uh, but it was with the expectation that the original deal would continue, you know, for as long as that the lights are on in that building. And in order to keep the lights on, tenants, when they look around, they, they look for that obligation that the landlord has to provide parking. And, um, you know, I've, I've, I've paid for parking now in every, uh, every, each of the three ramps. Uh, and, uh, and I, uh, I'm happy to have it, uh, and I would want it for my employees. Uh, and so I can understand why this is so important to both the landlord and the tenant.
Any other questions, Mr. Schmidt?
And, so, for, when, before John Deere moved out of that building, I presume the utilization on that ramp was pretty full?
Yes.
And the expectation is that this would have a similar effect on how that would work going forward?
Yeah, same, same square footage, and if you, and certainly, there's not a gate there, so you can drive around the ramp. And I don't know if they removed all the signs, but if you see J D C F, that stood for John Deere Construction and Forest. And, uh, I don't want, I, I, I don't want anything said here tonight to, you know, sound threatening. Uh, it's just the climate of economic development, particularly on this side of the river.
What, and I, I think that as we look at the parking ramp, with us having the access for the public on that in the after-five o'clock hours, during the working days, when I think we need the least amount of downtown parking in general for the city. So I think to strike that balance and be able to use that as a tool to help recruit people and recruit business makes a lot of sense to me. And I think seeing that partnership continue is, I mean, I'm pretty generally in favor of it.
Mr. Timmy.
Uh, I, I'm kind of echoing Alderman Waldron's question. If there were a way to strike this renewal as contingent upon fulfillment of the other contract, so that we're not stuck in a, a thirty-year extension of the, the, the parking, and then this other agency pulls out. And, and, and I'm just kind of wondering if that's a possibility. It feels like it's a circular contingency, but I'm, i- if that's a possibility, I, I think that would be wonderful. Uh, second, as a resident, I've, and this was probably during the John Deere days. I was driving through there looking for a place to park, not realizing I could. Because everything said reserved. And there are a number of restaurants down there. I'm wondering if as part of this, we can maybe negotiate some sort of signage, uh, during those, uh, times, so the public knows that this is public parking on the weekend and after five o'clock.
There has, there has been signage like that in the past.
I've, I've never seen it.
Still there.
Yeah.
But there, but there has been signage available after five o'clock.
Okay.
It was originally that five o'clock threshold was really for the mark. So that if you needed excess, excess parking, especially in the winter months, that was available. Turned out, people generally, Quadsidings don't like to walk a lot.
Yeah.
So even that didn't get utilized as much as we originally thought.
And I definitely think with, if, if we can revitalize Fifth Avenue as much as we hope, and, and all, and Fourth Avenue as well, that parking structure will be highly utilized on the weekends and in the evening. And so just any kind of signage, I think, would, i- if it has to be part of the agreement, I don't really know.
To your point about, um, activating the downtown with twenty-five to fifty, I believe it is, new, new jobs in that center, right?
Yeah, and, and that's, that's a difficult question for me to answer, having not been on the government's side.
Okay.
I can tell you though, uh, it would be, it, that's what it represents on the seventh floor. Uh, with, with my operation, we might be more densely, uh, uh, designed than, than they would. I see, I saw, got a glimpse of a floor plan, and it might even be in, in this document. And, um, I can't tell with regard to, uh, the, the new pre-COVID office design and then the post-COVID office design, how many people they're planning on with the cubicles, and they have some wide, wider open spaces. But I, I think that's a reasonable number.
Well, what I wanted to say about that was that, you know, we have gotten feedback, several of us council members, from, um, restaurant owners down there. Dead Poets in particular, at our Rotary meetings, um, who, he has mentioned that things are picking up now for his business because there is more activity downtown, um, with the TaxSlayer being open more. And so I can only imagine that new jobs in the area will also benefit, have, uh, have that benefit of activating economic activity for the other businesses that have been hurting.
That, that's my observation, and I, as a long-term tenant, uh, uh, in the central business district, uh, our staffs, our respective staffs have, have come to understand that if you leave at three o'clock and come back at five-thirty, y- your space was likely to be occupied. And, um, and, and so that's understood. And, and, and I, and I think that, uh, I, I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't be opposed to exploring signage, like you've said is in the past. I can, I can say the understanding with the people that are in the building now, uh, uh, exists. Uh, uh, you know, I've never, I've never parked in the spot of an FBI agent. Uh, uh, but I know they parked in, 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 in so, uh, spaces of mine. Uh, and, 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 uh, but I, but I will say that the, uh, we're all happy about the reopening, for example, of the TaxSlayer Center. And I've been observing with now, uh, Hockey, uh, particularly that, uh, event they had where they brought back the Mallards. I left after five o'clock and the first floor of that ramp, and part of the second, was filled with, uh, attendees. Uh, and, and that's a good thing. And so, um, uh, I, I don't know what we have with regard to the other ramps, but I can see that that ramp i- is pop- popular. The one at Center Station is, is more intimidating personally, uh, uh, to me. Uh, uh, but, um, that one is very, uh, inviting, uh, I think. And, and I think the tenants that I know, uh, would be tolerant of, uh, of that, and as would the landlord, I wanna, I wanna say. You know, it, he inherited that agreement, but he's never, uh, contended that he should have anymore. But I understand, you know, it's, 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 it's an amenity to the building. Uh, but it is, is it too bold to say it is the premier mixed-use office building in downtown?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, and it, it, I can, you know, I think I've already listed half a dozen different tenants. And, and you want more, of course. Uh, so, uh, that's, again, you know, I'll, I'll be at your service to answer any questions. And I, you know, respect the questions that have been asked.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, seven point five. A resolution authorizing the interim city engineer to accept a proposal from IMAG Inc. For construction engineering services regarding project, uh, M F T twenty-one dash zero 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 seven nine dash zero zero dash R P. Twenty-sixth Avenue reconstruction in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand four hundred dollars. Mr. Vitas.
Uh, mayor and members of council, uh, staff recommends approval.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Timian. Uh, discussion. Mr. Waldron.
Just for your consideration going forward, a couple of things have happened here. We've really inundated the staff with a lot of capital improvement projects for the next couple of years. And while I'm not necessarily aware if we have any absences and inspectors, we have all our inspectors, Mike?
Yes, we have all the inspectors on staff.
We have really inundated them with a lot of work coming on, but what I want you to keep in mind is look at the price of what this costs. It's a hundred and sixty thousand for an employee that basically, if we're lucky, is gonna work five months. Generally, in the past, we hired these employees and had them on staff, knowing full well that they were gonna be very busy for those four to five months, but we could utilize them elsewhere during the other, uh, eight months during the year. And so it's a significant cost to privatize work like this, so be judicious heading into the future. Thank you.
Anything else? I did have, I, I, this is a question I didn't ask before, but this is a project that was delayed, correct? Twenty-sixth, from last year, C I P?
I don't believe so.
No? Mr. Moore?
No, at, yes, it was supposed to be done last year. It was part of the
Is this the one behind this?
It's by the high school.
Yeah, and, and there was a, there was a delay. Now, it's gonna be done in one year though, instead of two.
My mistake.
It'll be done, uh, uh, during this period.
So it's actually on schedule, it's just being done in one.
We're just doing it twice as fast.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to our informationals, Mr. Vitas. That is an information report.
I will be brief, mayor and members of council, uh, you should have received with your, with your agenda packet, the next step in the process of reporting out to you on a regular basis, uh, all things going on. As you recall, that was a major issue, major concern, uh, even going back to when I first met you all and interviewed here. And slowly, methodically, we've been building, uh, building our train, you know? And so, this, this piece of the puzzle, status and information, this report is probably larger than you would normally see because what we did is we captured January, February, and March, uh, but going and reported in April. But in May, you will receive the, uh, you'll receive a report for the month of April, and every month thereafter, you'll be receiving these reports. These reports speak to a number of things. They speak to our strategic goals, which, as you know, are really, really critical. Uh, for, uh, all eighty-five of them are critical for advancing the full agenda of this council and the community at large, who spoke to the strategic plan last summer. Um, the action plan items, of course, we developed an action plan. We would be reporting on that quarterly and updating that, so you'll see an update to the dashboard. You'll see which projects have, have, have gone green, which projects are still red, so they're not, they're not moving forward. We will speak to those in here. We won't ignore that, so then these things are directly linked. See, what you find in here additionally is, uh, those things that are not necessarily at the level of a strategic plan goal. Uh, you will find capital improvement plans and capital equipment replacements taking place. You know, you approve a budget, there's a lot of money that goes into replacing our capital equipment or going into our capital improvements. We'll be reporting on those as this report did, and as you can see, and as, as, uh, as Alderman Waldron pointed out, uh, it's a busy year. I mean, we have a significant body of work in front of us across all departments. Nobody got a break. Everybody's busy, uh, trying to deliver, deliver results and, and success stories. That's what this is about. Uh, there are departmental goals which don't rise to the level of the C I P, Capital Equipment Replacement Schedule, or the Strategic Plan. These are things that, that need to get done because they're required. Uh, like statutorily reporting on the annual audit, something that the finance department will work on. They work on that literally for four, four to six months in order to deliver that in June to you. Uh, that's going well, by the way. We're looking good. I was gonna say we look good. Uh, but that, that's just an example of a departmental goal. And then there are council directives. And I know that this has been a bone of contention, and it's something that I'm trying to wrap my hands around. Uh, staff knows from, uh, the staff meetings that we've had at the director level, you know, that if there are directives that they were aware of, that they need to identify them, or if there are those that were completed, we need to know that. There are those that are in process, we need to know that. If there are those that have not been attended to, we need to know that too. I mean, there's no shame, there's no faults, we're not looking for that. We're just looking to deliver results. Um, so we are in a process of assembling that list as well. And that's painstaking, trying to get that information, because it, you know, it spans some period of time. You know, I, you know, pre-pandemic through the pandemic and, and through last year. So last year, we pretty much have our, our hands on, starting to really wrap tight. It's the older directives that we're looking for. So, but we will work on that, we will bring those back to you, and we'll discuss those, and we'll see what you wanna do in terms of prioritizing them to go forward. But I think this report, again, uh, it'll be posted on the website, so, you know, citizens will see your strategic plan, you know, on the webpage, they'll see the, the action plan, and when we're gonna do these things, and how we're gonna do them. Uh, and the necessary tasks, and then they'll see the status and information report on all of those activities. So this helps then to keep you more fully informed, and all of the money being spent and all the projects that are underway when you speak to your constituents.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Choking on air.
Yeah, him indeed.
If anyone else wants to go. I always gonna do this, but, so there are a couple of different plans that we have, you know, the bike waste plan, the twenty-third Avenue plan, and, and some of these other, other things that are out there. Is it, i- i- are those also being looked at and worked in to future budgets, or just in thinking in general?
Yeah, I mean, a- any, anything that is capital improvement related, you know, if it's not built in there within the next three years, there's a reason for that. It might have been something that was missed. I think part of, part of what will speak to our capital improvements, especially related to streets, which is the thing citizens want the most, right? Nobody wants to feel the clickety-clack underneath their car. I don't care what you drive, you feel it, you hear it. And, uh, that's what they're looking for. So when, uh, when Joe is working with our consultants to bring forward this pavement management system, you know, and these people complete their work, it will speak to every single roadway in, and alleyway inside the city. It will then help to prioritize from the worst to the best. Obviously, if it's brand new, it's gonna be at the bottom of the list. But if it's, hasn't been attended to in, in twenty years, it's gonna rise to the top very rapidly. You know, and then we're gonna have to go through that list and, and cull it, and decide as a council, what goes first. I mean, we'll be able to say there's twenty of them, but we can only afford fifteen this year. So which five get pushed back? Those are the kind of decisions you'll be faced with.
So this twenty-third Avenue plan, just briefly, it had a number of, it was, it was actually put together, um, in two thousand nineteen. I think we approved, it was one of the first things, I think, that happened after I was sworn in, so this is three years ago now. Uh, we approved it, it had a number of quick action items, you know, quick wins and so forth. Not a single one of those, I think, has ever been budgeted or, or, and we've added a couple. Are there a couple that have been done now?
So this year, actually, the Sixteenth Street and Twenty-third Avenue
Yeah.
intersection is getting done. You could argue that this new sidewalks in Villa Park are a part of that, because they're some of the quick action items. So there is, there has been some movement on it, just not as quickly.
That's just naggy stuff that you and I and
Yeah, and Alderman.
So it wasn't a comprehensive approach.
No.
It's been done in stages.
So those plans, I, and I understand that we've, we've got a lot going on and so forth, it's just that those plans, you know, they were such an important thing to get done and, and
Well, but can I just point out that there's been an incredible amount of staff turnover in these, the years since that? So that can only be the, a, a culprit to why things are getting done slower and with, uh, without the big, bigger picture talked about. But, you know, as we go back to the strategic plan, refine things as necessary, et cetera, and the comprehensive plan comes forward, at least I would imagine Mr. Vitas would then take up these, and, and the stability in our staffing that we're seeking will help get things going.
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Your Honor. Now that I'm not choking on the air again. Um, I just, uh, I, I think this is excellent and drawing the attention to all those details. And I appreciate the continued effort to try and wrap our hands around all of the outstanding issues. Because one of the, the things that's been really frustrating to me as we go through is it, um, if every couple of weeks we get reminded, oh, we did this before, we did that before, we did this. I just want it all here in front of us. And, and almost always, when we look at what happened, you can go back and find someone left. And either the person who that was assigned to left, or the person who it was assigned to took over someone else's job, or, um, a lot of those, those things that have happened, plus the pandemic in there. Um, but if we gather them all together, we can really come to a place and say we know where they're at. Um, because when those things trickle in, it's really hard to then say, okay, what's more important, dealing with this or dealing with these other items that we've already set out? And so if we wanna take that comprehensive look, I think that, that's an excellent step, and I appreciate your, your
And so if we want to take that comprehensive look, I think that, that's an excellent step, and I appreciate your, your take that forward.
Yeah, I wanna thank the staff too publicly because this was a lot of work to actually get them to sit down and pull this all together and, and, and help us to assemble it and, uh, and then to review it because I think, uh, they've gone the extra mile, and, and kudos to them for the work they've done.
Thank you. Anything further on this item? Yes, Mr. Waldron?
Thank you, Bob and staff. It's the second to last item on the very last page, but there seems to be a little bit of, uh, progress on the drop-off recycling and the potential, potential for citing it somewhere, and I very much appreciate the staff's efforts in that regard. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we will move to eight point two, redistricting, redistricting City of Moline Aldermanic wards. Mr. Green, thank you for being with us.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. So after analyzing the twenty-twenty census data, uh, staff found that ward boundaries needed, needed to be redrawn to reflect the, uh, population shifts and changes that have taken place since the current boundaries, uh, were created. Uh, so, and according to the Illinois Municipal League, there's a ten percent deviation rule regarding population within wards and districts. So here in this map, we see our current ward boundaries with twenty-twenty population. With a total population of forty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-one, uh, divide that by seven, an ideal ward size would be six thousand one hundred and forty. Uh, the ten percent deviation, we can say plus or minus six hundred and fourteen. So we need wards within five thousand five hundred and twenty-six and six thousand seven hundred and fifty-four in population. And if you look at Ward One, that's below that range, while Ward Seven is above that range. And staff was also notified that ward boundaries, uh, shall not, uh, divide a voter precinct into two or more, uh, pieces. So basically, ward boundaries have to follow precinct boundaries. Um, so this map shows our current ward boundaries with the precinct boundaries overlaid, and they, they follow it for the most part, but there's a handful of areas where, uh, if you see black without a red stripe on top of it, that's an area where it splits a precinct and, in violation. So staff was directed to identify new ward boundaries that would adhere to the population and precinct criteria and also, uh, avoid unseating any currently elected aldermen and keep the, uh, wards as contiguous and, um, compact as possible. Uh, with that criteria in mind, staff also tried their best to not change the ward boundaries, uh, as, uh, so aldermen don't have to, um, have a, a broad new batch of constituents. But unfortunately, that was kind of the, the, the criteria that was most flexible to, uh, to work with, where the other ones are very stringent. Uh, so this Option One map here, um, uh, unfortunately is a bit of a tease. Uh, this is the option that staff arrived at not knowing the voter precinct criteria. Um, I just wanted to show you this to show that staff really did want to keep ward boundaries as close to the current, um, drawing as possible and, and without unseating, unseating any current aldermen. Uh, but however, this does not, uh, follow the, the voter precinct boundaries, which we see here. There's a lot of, uh, intersection and, uh, uh, splitting going on. So unfortunately, this is the one staff would like to, uh, propose, but, uh, uh, having that precinct criteria, our, our hands are kind of tied, um, and we can't. So the next step is to, instead of using census blocks as our Lego pieces to build the wards, uh, we aggregate the census blocks to the, uh, precincts, but only the Moline census blocks, of course, areas crossing the Rock Island East Moline. Um, and then those precincts with the Moline population become the Lego blocks that build the wards. Uh, being those, having a bigger geography, uh, really kind of handcuffs us a little bit into, uh, what our possibilities are. Uh, so this is the first possibility, uh, keeping that precinct criteria. We call it Option Two. Uh, unfortunately, Ward Seven falls below that, that minimal five thousand five hundred and twenty-six by a little over a hundred, I think, a hundred and ten.
That's okay.
Yeah, but, um, uh, the, in doing this, all the alder, none, none of the aldermen are unseated, and, um, if you look at the red lines, none of the red lines are intersected or, or split in two. But like, like I said, we're, we're, we violated that, uh, population criteria. And if you look at the southeastern, uh, portion of Ward Six where that, uh, green star is, uh, if we transfer that to Ward Seven, uh, which is shown in this Option Three map, now every ward is within that ten percent deviation of the mean. And, um, that first map took, um, uh, compactness a little too seriously in, uh, making populations suffer. Now we're taking population seriously and making compactness suffer. And I believe compactness isn't a, a prerequisite or required. It's just, uh, nice if you can do it. Uh, continuity is definitely a prerequisite, something we have to do, and, um, we verified that. Having that little corner intersection being a connection is enough for continuity. Uh, so staff, um, has identified this Option Three as the best option, and the only option that satisfies all criteria without unseating any aldermen. We even looked at various other, uh, options and scenarios, uh, none of which were able to keep all aldermen in their current wards. Uh, some of them didn't even satisfy the population criteria. So this item will be brought to you in the future council meeting, uh, to be finalized. Uh, staff is not looking for a, a vote, but would like to open up the floor to your questions and comments at this time.
Mr. Timian?
I would like to first apologize that so many of us live on the border of, of our wards. I think three of us do. Uh, I, I, I've, uh, gone over these maps quite a bit, and I also land on Option Three as my preferred. For a number of reasons, I, I, I like that the wards are no longer all north to south, that they are more regional in nature, and that gives, I, I feel better representation to the, the residents of Moline, uh, to get a, just a, a more unified idea of like, this is a neighborhood a little bit more than anything else. So that is my preference. I know that I, I might be alone there, or there might be all, altering opinions, but I'd like to, to hear them from other members of the council.
Mr. Messias?
Y- yeah, same here. That's the one that stood out to me, um, selfishly. I, I just, uh, uh, the sliver of downtown that I, I nor- normally have, there's also the third ward has a small sliver. It just, it would probably be nicer to have a, a bigger chunk of that, um, because, yeah, it just seemed like, it's just one sliver of the third ward, but obviously Mike's not here to see how he thinks about it. And, um, there, I also, frankly, there, there's some neighborhoods in that other area above, uh, downtown that have a lot in common with some of the other neighborhoods in the second ward. Um, so I, I always think that's a good thing, when you compact the populations, that they have some stuff in common.
I should also say that when putting these ward boundaries together, I was laser focused on just population and, uh, precinct boundaries. I, I didn't take anything else into consideration as far as keeping the downtown together. That just kind of happened, you know? So there, there, there's no, there, there wasn't any other outside consideration other than strictly population and precinct.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer?
So I really appreciate all your work on this. I know it wasn't easy, and, uh, I, you know, I, I, I agree this is probably the best option. As someone who's spent three years just really beating part of that ward, you know, there's so many different things, um, you hate to see it, you hate to lose it because you get to really, you get to really know. Uh, you get to know a lot of people and, 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 uh, it's in a lot of ravines and a lot of, a lot of things. So, uh, you hate to lose it, but this makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Schmidt?
I, I do very much agree with, as we, we change the shape and do away with the long slivers. I, I don't think they've served us. I, I've said that for a long time. And I don't think this gets to a perfect place, but I think it moves us back that place, that way, knowing, obviously, what the parameters we're working in. I, I do have real concerns that looking at, frankly, my precinct getting pushed out into the seventh ward. Um, and not, not because I don't want to be represented by Mr. Waldron, but, um.
I don't blame him again.
No, I, I just think that when, when you look at that and, and how that, that one spot plays, it just, it reads like what we're trying to avoid in so many ways and with compactness. And, and, um, I recognize, you know, from seeing some of those other versions that, I mean, I presume we couldn't have somehow found that in a way that was truly contiguous, not just legally contiguous, um, because it, it just sets it really far and strangely apart.
And I know it reads as applicable as possible, um, and, and it, that obviously isn't ideal, and when we're going through this process, we're actually, we had a team together, and I showed them Option Two. Like, man, if only we could just add this portion to Ward Seven, then it, it would work. And then, you know, other people in the team said, well, yeah, we could. So I guess you have to take whether a population is more, uh, has a larger weight than compactness. And I'm not the one that can answer that.
Yeah, and, and obviously that, I know the precinct is a relatively small one, so it's easy to pop it around and, and shift ease small amounts.
Mr. Moyer?
Thank you. I, I actually thought it was really smart to do it that way in a sense because in ten years, the population of Ward Seven is, is, continues to grow, and this is an easy one then to flip back into, you know, to, to equal. So I, I would almost think of it as temporary, and I think that's, in some of the cases, this actually looks like something that'll be easier to manage going into the future. Anyway.
And I, I do understand that, but that's ten years of temporary, where my neighborhood is associated with a completely different part of the city. And all my neighbors are dealing with that, not just me, and, and we are all looking at a lot of wards that marry multiple different parts of town. But, um, I just think it, when you can't even connect it by just being next to each other, we have to go to the catty corner approach. I, I just, I don't think it belongs in any map. I mean, that's just a personal, I don't think it belongs in our state maps. I don't think it belongs in the city maps. Um, I think that should be illegal, and I always have, so it'd be very hard for me to, to back down.
And I don't think there's a way to satisfy all criteria without having that, uh, intersection, can, you know, making the continuity.
Yeah, we tried.
Thank you.
Desperately.
Anything further? Thank you very much, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, I was just gonna say that we have general consensus. We'll bring this back as a cow item for Chapter Ten. Next, I mean, on the twenty-sixth. So we're gonna use this.
But he said it's coming. In a different form. Um, okay, uh, it's our public comment. Not at this time. Then we will call the regular council, uh, meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no invocation this evening. Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Present.
Messias?
Present.
Went? Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien? Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of Committee of the Hall and Council meeting minutes of March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, and the appointment may during Committee of the Hall on April fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Resolutions. Council Bill ten sixty-nine dash twenty-twenty-two, resolution authorizing the Director of Utilities to purchase PVC piping from QC Wind Water to be used in Project Number thirteen seventy-one, bypassed Sanitaris Sewer Project in the amount of fifty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Council Bill ten seventy dash twenty-twenty-two, resolution authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to approve to an intergovernmental agreement and bylaws for the Illinois Quad Cities Land Bank Authority and authorizing the Community and Economic Development Department to begin work upon execution of the intergovernmental agreement for the Illinois Quad Cities Land Bank Authority Program to appoint a local government director and to do all things necessary to implement said program requirements. Council Bill ten seventy-one dash twenty-twenty-two, resolution authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to execute an attest to a contract with McCarthy Improvement Company for motor fuel tax section twenty-one zero zero two seven nine zero zero RP twenty-sixth Avenue Reconstruction for the amount of two million one hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. Council Bill ten seventy-two dash twenty-twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to accept a warranty deed from the Quad Cities Rehabilitation Institute LLC. Council Bill ten seventy-three dash twenty-twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to execute an attest to an inter- intergovernmental agreement with the City of Vetendorf for shared maintenance of the I seventy-four recreational trail and aesthetic lighting. Council Bill ten seventy-four dash twenty-twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to execute an attest to a licensing agreement with Endica Estates Condos Homeowners Association to install a line of trees and shrubs on Fifty-third and Thirty-eighth Avenue right of way at thirty-seven twenty-eight fifty-third Street. Council Bill ten seventy-five dash twenty-twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the Information Technology Manager to purchase thirty-two Dell Latitude seventy-two twenty rugged tablets from Dell Technologies in the amount of eighty-three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Moyer and Alderman Timian. Roll call, please. Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill ten seventy-six dash twenty-twenty-two, a resolution amending Resolution Number twelve thirty-two dash twenty-twenty-one, the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two for the Police Department by temporarily increasing the authorized strength for sworn personnel from eighty-one to eighty-six and permanently increasing authorized strength for sworn personnel from eighty-one to eighty-four.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Alderman Waldron, second by Alderman Moyer. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Council Bill ten seventy-two, I'm sorry, ten seventy-seven dash twenty-twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the renewal of an intergovernmental support agreement between the City of Moline and the Rock Island Arsenal for refuse and recycling collection.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt and Alderman Timian. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Council Bill ten seventy-eight dash twenty-twenty-two, resolution authorizing the interim city engineer to accept a proposal from IMECC Incorporated for construction engineering services regarding project number MFT two-one zero 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 seven nine zero zero RP twenty-sixth seventy reconstruction in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand four hundred dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
Uh, motion by Alderman Waldron, second by Alderman Messias. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. First reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty oh five dash twenty-twenty-two, an ordinance amending Chapter Four Alcohol Liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, increasing the number of Class CC licenses in the city at the request of Innovative Landscaping and Maintenance LLC, doing business as QC Quick Stop. Council Bill thirty oh six dash twenty-twenty-two, an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-four Personnel of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section twenty-four dash thirty-two oh seven, Appendix One, by adding a job description for Land Bank Program Manager. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, so we're too miscellaneous. I do not have much this evening, other than, um, chose the wrong device to bring with the email from, um, Rod Schick that, just to let you know, he's doing a cleanup with Keep Moline Beautiful Committee this Saturday. Oh, yes, sir. Were you gonna announce that, Mr. Williams? Do you have the details on the time? I'm sorry, you know, with all these proclamations on Earth Week and Water Conservation Month, et cetera, it was in my radar. You can fill in the blanks for me. But in any case, uh, that's something, uh, that you're welcome to attend. And Alderman Moyer, you had, you have a, a litter, a trash pickup thing you mentioned this week.
Well, yeah, so really, it's actually in Ward Six, but the East End group is going to be doing, they've moved their date to the sixth of May. So I'll bring that, it's, that's been moved, and, and our Rotary is going to be doing something in a couple of weeks, on Saturday, the twenty-second or third, whichever, whichever.
Rotary is the twenty-second. That's what I was trying to remember.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay. So lots of, lots of caring concern for the earth for this. Okay, so lots of, lots of caring concern for the earth for this month. Um, let's try to keep that going. Um, that is all I have. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've been told the Keep Moline Beautiful Commission is gonna have a cleanup this Saturday at nine o'clock.
Nine.
Uh, I'm sure Rod Schick will be sending emails out to everyone, but, uh, shouldn't be more than two hours.
Where would you like us to be?
Uh, down at the, uh, nineteenth Avenue and River, uh, water plant. You can park there. There you are.
Thank you.
I got one thing to say.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, this, uh, last week, um, Alderman Williams and myself had the opportunity to. Uh, be part of a ribbon cutting for QC Acupuncture Clinic in the Florisinta neighborhood. It's in the old Project Now, uh, spot where, right next to the Greater Quad Cities Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, um. And just want to say, uh, we, we both, uh, we were happy to see, um, this, a business moving in there and also. Uh, I didn't realize that Project Now has a lot of, uh, uh, business, uh, uh, commercial spots that they rent and we also. It's a nice segue to an informational meeting we'd had with, uh, with Project Now, uh, of all the great stuff that they're doing in the community. Um, we were invited along with other, uh, the, the mayor and other aldermen, uh, to an informative breakfast, uh, last Friday. Uh, just to learn about everything they do to help out people in our community. Seeing a business open up in the Florisinta neighborhood just shows that. Um, you know, a lot of people think people go to Project Now to get assistance for weatherization or whatever that may be. But also businesses go there to, uh, start businesses. I had no idea, learned a lot. Um, but yeah, if you get a chance, stop by QC, uh, acupuncture and, um, they have a really cool. Uh, model of payment where I believe it's fifteen dollars the first time. You get a free session and then it's whatever you can pay. It's an adjusting model. So really neat. I've never done it myself, but now I'm inclined to do it. So.
Thank you. Mr. Timian.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I, I'm about a week early, but I just felt I wanted to share, uh, KJ and I and a number of other. Uh, employees for the city have been participating in the, uh, Citizens Police Academy. Uh, Alderman Meyer was there for a few, few weeks and, uh, has been busy otherwise. It's been a very eye-opening and interesting, uh, experience. Tomorrow is our last, uh, uh, class. Uh, I received fifty thousand volts. Is that correct for, from the taser? I did not. Uh, there's, I intentionally asked not to be videotaped. I don't need proof. Uh, I have witnesses. Uh, it, it's been a very interesting endeavor and I definitely recommend it for everyone on the council. Uh, just, just to see what goes into the police force and, and understand the multiple aspects. So, uh, I just wanted to, to, to thank them in advance. It, it's been great and, and I will be scheduling my ride along soon. So I can get that final step in as well. Thank you.
Mr. Williams, you have something for Mr. Timian.
Do you recommend the academy or the taser?
We, we had a deal with, uh, Lieutenant Wade that if everyone from the city were tased, that we would get T-shirts. And my size is large because we all did it and so I'll be getting my T-shirts soon.
Mr. Meyer.
So now I feel like I'm on the hook for the shirts. I wasn't there that day.
I'm sure we can arrange you to get tased still.
I might be there tomorrow. Anyway, it's been, it's been really informative. Thank you.
Anything else?
Ratted out.
Mr. Waldron.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, Your Honor. Um, I just wanted to talk about something that, uh, the Main Street Commission, Main Street Commission has had going on. Um, looking at, uh, putting up ghost murals. And I don't know if people are familiar, but that's where you take. An old sign, often an ad sign or maybe just for a, for a business and you, you paint that back up. To what it was historically. So we're specifically working on one that is, um, down on the Rouse Consulting Group, which is at four twenty-two sixteenth street. And has some great visibility, uh, toward, uh, toward the river there and, um, there is a. The Roderick Cafe sign and there was an old ad for Wrigley that they're gonna be restoring as well as putting up. A Rouse mural and this is a partnership and they want one for their own building, which is, uh, a great way to do that as well as one. Uh, promoting Main Street. So those are kind of going up where people will be able to see them and. Um, you know, as we've talked so much about placemaking and building out the art. And some of those things take a long time and it's really great to see how the Main Street Commission is able to kind of go and say. Hey, these are some of the cool things we're able to step into and, and really help build that up and make, make the place a little as we build it there. So. I just think it's something really cool that we're seeing and wanted to share with anybody and if you want to see, uh, pictures of where it's at, you can let me know or. Or I'm sure Jeff will have stuff more as well, uh, to see.
Could we extend that to the avenue as well? I know Main Street is Main Street, but, you know, is there, like the old Schwinn bicycle. Yeah, it's like that jumps right to my head.
I think the, that type of project could abs- absolutely be done. Um, obviously the Main Street budget is not gonna fund it. Um, and this is a, a shared cost too, um, with, with Rouse, uh. You know, doing it on their building and with their, um, obviously their logos and those pieces. So it's, I think a good mixture, maybe some we could look into expanding.
Thank you. Mr. Vitas.
You didn't forget me this time.
I did not.
There you go. Uh, just real quick, uh, maybe a challenge to the fire department since they're enjoying police department. Experiences that the fire department should, you know, get them into bunker gear, get them into one of those training towers, you know, fill it with smoke, let them climb.
Tried the last two years to do, uh, fire on one of one end, which I think several have been. And, uh, fortunately you didn't totally get canceled, but hopefully we get that back.
Make sure they climb the ladder to the top when it's fully extended too in the mid, in midair.
And you get fire helmets, not necessarily.
Yeah, you do.
Is that how Leah got her helmet? Is that how Leah got her helmet? I always wondered how you got that helmet. Now I know. Well, that's, that's great. I don't know, chief, they just one-upped you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I do. I just wanted to just kind of mention to the council that Leah and I have been working diligently with our executive recruiters. And as much as we like Michael Shank and Charles and, you know, Graves and, you know, our former interim director Brad Fink. Who moved down to Carroll Stream, um, to be close to his wife and home. Um, we are proceeding with interviews next week with our, uh, community economic development candidates. Um, we'll be interviewing, I believe, five candidates, uh, four, it's down, wrong one, four there. Uh, public works directors on the heels of that coming right behind. Uh, and then the city engineer as well. That's been a real tough one to recruit for, but we do have two candidates that we are going to look seriously at. And then, uh, in early May, probably the second week of May, the, uh. The position of assistant city administrator, that actually is closing and then. We expect that those candidates will come forward for interview, second week of May. So we are gonna close the gaps quickly. Uh, and hopefully not lose anybody in the process because I hear nothing but horror stories from recruiters. About people being offered positions and then their current employers bumping their benefits and their comp packages to keep them. Because they don't want to go through what we're going through. So just, just letting you know that these things do happen. So. But we are moving forward and we do have some really high quality candidates. So. Thank, and that's, that's all I have.
Okay. No public comment still. No executive session. Correct? Oh, there. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have skipped the directors.
Your Honor, I am pleased to report that I was just notified that we haven't agreed with Silver.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Lodi. Um, and, and thank you so much for your diligent work on that project. Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?